November 10, 2021, 6:00 PM. This regular commission of the board of commissioners for the meeting is called of order.
City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Mayor Hendricks.
Here.
Vice Mayor Price.
Here.
Commissioner Hodges.
Here.
Commissioner Andrews.
Here.
Commissioner Hudson.
Here.
If you will stand and join Commissioner Hodges in an invocation and pledge of allegiance.
We ask for your attendance at the deliberation of the city council this evening as it seeks to do thy will in consideration of the issues before them. Bless the members of this assembly, the citizens that are present at this meeting, and all the residents of the city of Madeira Beach. We pray that our work this evening will find favor in your sight. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is approval of the agenda. I'd like to move a couple of items if y'all don't mind. That's, um, item B and C. Um, I'm sorry. Item B and, yeah, B and C. I'd like to move those to the front of the agenda so that we can go ahead and get this done and get these folks out here if they would like to leave.
Under new business?
Yes.
Eleven B and C?
Yeah.
No problem.
Okay. I don't think we have any proclamations tonight, do we?
No.
Okay. Next is public comment. If there's any public comment from anyone that would like to speak on anything that's not on tonight's agenda, please step to the podium, state your name. You have three minutes, three minutes to speak. Okay. Next is the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
I'll second.
City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Andrews.
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson.
Yes.
Sorry. Vice Mayor Price.
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges.
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks.
Yes.
It's okay.
Next is appointment of an alternate to the library board. On board, on board. Okay. Sorry about that. You're right. Okay. Let's move on to, um, new business, um, appointment to the planning commission. Is Director Portell here?
Uh, no, sir, she's not.
Okay.
There's four vacancies on the planning commission, and we have nine applications, but we did receive one after the packet was published, and the commission can accept that if they want to. So we would have 10 applications to consider for appointment. Now, one of those, Christina Lockwell Wells, my understanding is she's, she also said that if she didn't get appointed for planning commission, she would be interested in serving on the civil service as well.
Okay.
So we do have three vacancies on that, and so that would give us three applications for that board.
Okay. And I'm fine with that application that came in after the packet.
Yes.
If everyone else is good with that. So what I'd like to do is call each of you up and have you tell us a little bit about your background and why you feel like you should be on the planning commission. Mr. Conley, you just happen to be number one on the list.
Good evening, everybody. Hello. My name is John Conley. Um, I've been a resident or I've owned a house in Madeira Beach for the last nine years, and I am now here full-time retired. Um, I come from upstate New York. I was a contractor for over 40 years in both residential and commercial. I have a degree in advertising and design, and I tie flies. Anything else?
Thanks, thanks, John. Ms. Wells, would you like to come up and speak? Tell us about yourself.
Hi, my name's Christina Lockhart Wells. We've been living here, it's going on 11 years now. I've loved, not from Florida, but I've grown to love Florida. Hate snow, so. Um, I really love the city that I live in. I care about what happens to the city I live in, its growth, its welfare, and the residents that live here. So that's why I want to be involved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Wells had actually put in an application to drive the snowplow.
[laughing]
Good evening, Commissioners. Mayor, my name is John Marr. I lived in Madeira Beach for about 15 years, lived in Tierary before that. I'm a civil engineer by degree. I work for a, I'm the operations manager for a heavy civil marine bridge contractor. We do work all over the southeast. Um, I guess the reason I'd like to do it is I think I could help the city and continue the upward movement that y'all have provided the leadership for. So that's about it.
Great. Thank you. Teresa Nelson. Is Teresa Nelson here? Mike Noble. Mike's not here. Mark, pronounce your last name for me.
My last name is pronounced Patchkey.
Okay.
And I've lived in Madeira Beach for nine years with my wife, and I do estate planning and investment advising for 38 years, but we use our additional funds to buy real estate. We've done about six projects here and about 20 that I did over the years in Baltimore. And I think you guys have done a great job moving us forward, and John and I are friends, and we just thought we could continue and improve what you guys have already started. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Christine Ponti.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Christina. I have a materials engineering degree. I just moved to Madeira about six months ago. My boyfriend and I purchased a house, and we're homeowners here, and I really love Madeira, and I currently do materials consulting primarily in water and wastewater infrastructure. And so I think I'd offer a really unique perspective, and, you know, I'm hoping to be here for the long term, so I'd be looking to hopefully help the city grow and move forward. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you. Daniel Quill.
My name's Dan Quill. I've been a, I'm a service manager for like DOH right now, and Department of Education and all that stuff. I've been a resident of Madeira Beach for three years, and I just want to be a part of the community. That's what I got. And also a lot of properties I owned, managed, remodeled completely, and been doing a lot of work. I own a house too, so I know a lot of what needs to be done not to.
Okay, great. Thank you. And Timothy Smiley.
Hey, good evening. Timothy Smiley, I'm a civil engineer by education from Clemson. Currently work as a project manager in the aerospace industry. Been here for six months with Christina. So, yeah, as she said, we, we just really enjoy the area, excited to be a part of it, and I think this is probably the best way that I can contribute to that, so.
Great. Thank you. Curtis Latso.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Curtis Latso. My parents moved to Pinellas County in 1972, raised me and my brothers and sister in Seminole, and we always loved coming to the beach. I remember when this was the apple, and if anybody remembers the deck, and a lot of places that were here a long time ago. Spent a lot of time here growing up as a kid. And my wife and I moved to Madeira Beach 20 years ago, raised a daughter. She's now off at school, so maybe I need something new to do, so that I could be part of it. Professionally, I'm an electrical engineer, been one for 30 years. I've got a degree in both a master's and a PhD in the subject. I also have a master's degree in business. I'd just like to bring a maybe educated kind of common sense approach to what's going on and where the city's going, and that's how I see it. So it's two ways. There's some things I'd like to do, and maybe you give me something new to do and new to look at at this stage in my career.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Has the commission made the, made up their mind on their four choices? You can only have four.
They're amazing. I mean, what?
I know. We've got some great, we've got some great applicants.
Holy crap.
This is going to be a hard choice for us. All of us have had your resumes for the past week or so, so we've, we've gone over them and wanted to meet you personally and find out about you. I know, Mr. Noble has been on the planning board for how many years?
About 12, 13 years. 15.
I know, I know it's a lot, and he's, he's, um, very astute at what goes on there. So, have you made your choices?
I have.
Would you like to go over them? Or would you like us to go down to, pass these down to Clara and let her read the results?
You can do.
Or we can read them out.
I'll read them out.
Read them out loud if you'd like to do that.
And I based this on, you know, what our statutes or what our criteria was, obviously, and the applications, and obviously, listening to everybody up here. John Conley, John Magar, Mike Noble, Curtis Latso.
Commissioner Hodges.
Okay. I looked at this, and I was really impressed. A lot of people here from District Two. I was really impressed with that. Thank you. I picked John Mayer, also Mike Noble. Mike was on the planning board when I was on the planning board, so it's been a long time there. Mark Patchkey, and Daniel Quill.
I would like to also say I did consider what district they were in. We had, I think, three people from Bay Shore on here, and I felt like one was enough, so.
Well.
Okay.
They're still good.
Yeah. No, no, they're still good. It's just that it was hard. It was close.
Okay. My picks are John Conley, John Magar, Mike Noble, and Curtis Latso. Commissioner Andrews.
Again, I agree with all the, I mean, the resumes were fantastic, but I got to pick four. So John Mayer, Mike Noble, Daniel Quill, and Curtis Latso.
I missed one. I think it was Dan Quill.
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Hudson.
Okay. John Magar, Teresa Nelson, Michael Noble, and Timothy Smiley.
I missed one.
Three, four, five, and nine.
I'm sorry. Can I have, uh, Commissioner Price repeat yours again?
Oh, yes. One, three, five, and 10.
Okay. Thank you.
John, John, how do you pronounce your last name? I'm sorry. Marr, okay.
Marr, okay. I did say that.
I would say Mr. Marr and Mr. Noble are back on planning commission. And Mr. Latso is on. And I would say we need to vote again for the last two.
I mean, the last one.
The last one, yeah, but we, we need to, we've got two people that are on there. So it's a toss-up between Mr. Conley and Mr. Quill, so, um, if we can each, uh, have a vote between, we can just have a voice vote on these two.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Commissioner Hudson's the only one who didn't vote for either one of those two.
Okay.
So maybe he breaks the tie.
Quick, I want to look at Mr. Quill's resume again. Sorry.
I will say Mr. Conley has 45 years in the construction industry.
Mm-hmm.
Which is what led me to vote for him.
Yes, I would go with Mr. Conley.
Okay. All right. So our new planning commission members are Mr. Conley, Mr. Marr, Mr. Noble, and Mr. Latso. So thank you, gentlemen, very much. If y'all want to sneak on out of here, that's fine, or you can hang around and enjoy the Now we have, uh, now we have civil service commission. And we only, I think we have three openings on the civil service commission.
Yes, sir.
And we have three applicants. I don't know that we really need these folks to come up and speak again. I'm fine with, with those three. I think they'll all do a good job for us.
You want to read those three into the record?
Yes. Christina Lockhart Wells, Christine Ponti, and Paul Tilka.
And also, and also, how do you want to, how do you all want to address when the terms end? Like on the planning commission, they're three-year terms, so we have two that expire 2021, which will carry over to 2024. We've got one partial term that goes to 9/30/22, in which they can apply again. And we also have one that expires in two years, which is 23. There are two partial terms due to resignations. You want to go by the date of the application, or?
I would, I would say the date, date of the application as far as they're, or the date that they're put on a board is, is their term.
They fill the empty, the seats, the already, uh, term, the terms that are already in place. That way you have them dropping off at different times.
Correct.
And so that, so you need to fill each one of those vacant spots depending upon when the term expires. And obviously, the September 30th, 2021 has already happened, so that's not the term expiring. It would be 9/30/22.
The ones that expired 9/30/2021, it'd be three years from now, so the new term for that would be 2023. So there, I mean, 2024. So there'd be two for 2024 expiring, which those were expired terms, so those start over. And then there's a 9/30/22, which there was a resignation, so that's an, that's a remaining term, and as well as, um, the one for 2023, which that was, one year's already passed into that one.
So you're saying these seats are filling on existing term where we've had resignations?
Yeah, you can't just start them over.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
So the date of the application is fine?
Yeah. There's just a week's difference anyhow.
So you will contact everyone and let them know when their term ends?
Yes, ma'am. Now, let's look at.
Is it starting immediately? All these?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And the Linda's department, Linda Portell, the community development director, she will con, she, they will get ahold of everybody and let them know when the next meeting is and get information and packet information, educational materials that they would need. And I know there was a discussion about having the city attorney to review the, like, go over the sunshine rules and all that. He normally does that anyway, and so at their first meeting, so however they coordinate that.
Basically, if you got your application in first, you get the longer term?
Correct.
Okay.
And then when they go to expire, we'd let them know, and they have an opportunity at that time to reapply. And of course, we still open it up, and it comes back to the board.
Now, um, is that the same case with the civil service commission?
Yes.
Are these expired, or, or these are terms that need to be finished out where people have resigned?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
There's two that was resignation and one that expired. Okay.
Okay. Are we all set?
Yes.
Okay. Christina, you are on there, so if y'all'd like to stay, you're more than welcome to stay. Otherwise, you're, you're good. The city will be contacting you for the civil service board. Have you got any questions for us? You good? Okay. Next is appointment of alternate member of the library board. That was consent agenda. Sorry about that, guys. Need a line there.
And that alternate is Commissioner Hudson.
Yes. Uh, next is public hearings.
Public hearings, Mayor.
Yeah. Hey, Bob.
Hey.
Looks funny to see you up there. Okay. Next is public hearings. First is ordinance 2021-22, amending, amending the City of Madeira Beach Code of Ordinances Section 82-2, amending the definition of building contiguous tourists as defined in dwelling unit, employee, height, and nonconforming structure or use, second reading, and public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll read that ordinance. This is ordinance 2021-22, an ordinance of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending the definition of building contiguous, tourist as defined under the definition of dwelling unit, employee, height, and nonconforming structure or use in Section 82-2 definitions of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Madeira Beach and providing for an effective date. That was the second final reading of ordinance 2021-22 by title only.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. The proposed amendments update the definition section in the code to reflect proposed changes in the code. The current use of definitions and consistency with Pinellas County. Building to specify walled structures, contiguous to be consistent with Pinellas County's definition, tourist defined under the definition of dwelling unit, to remove the maximum area of each unit in condo, hotel, and motel or hotel, height to be consistent with ordinance 2021-23, employee to include all employees, not that of only adult use, and nonconforming structure or use to include lot.
Is there any more discussion amongst the commission on this?
I'd like to pass an ordinance on it.
We need to go ahead and have it open to the public first.
Yeah, we need to do that first.
And then the motion. Thanks.
Is there any public comment on this?
Thank you.
Just wanted to say, is it, what's the driver for it? Do you know what the driver is?
Andy, if you'd like to speak, if you'll come up to the podium and state your name and address.
Hi, Andy Wells, 550 Normandy Road. Just wanted to see what is the driver for the change? Is it legal, or is it, you know, what's, why are we doing it?
To be consistent with Pinellas County's version, because our plan has to match up with their plan. That's my understanding.
Yes, there's, there's a few different reasons why. One is to be consistent with Pinellas County's definitions, and like in the tourist dwell, definition of dwelling unit, right now there's 850 square feet in, so we're, we're removing that, that 850 maximum square feet. And, let's see, adult use in employee definition to just include all of employees. So they're all a little different, but just inconsistencies in, in, in the code.
So I presume if we don't do it, then we could be sued by the city, by the county?
Um, it's just being consistent with it, not that, not that they would sue us, or, but just being consistent with, with their definitions.
All right. No worries. I'm just worried about the 850, but that's okay.
Well, I think the idea of that was, it was originally written with hotels in mind, and the rooms are small, and now people are using condos and all sorts of different types of buildings for rentals, and a lot of them don't meet the 850. They're larger than that, so this is allowing condos and, that are renting their apartments, basically, to, to still fit in underneath the regulations.
Yes, you're correct. Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to pass ordinance 2021-22 on second reading.
So second.
I'll second.
City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Hodges.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Price.
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson.
Yes.
Commissioner Andrews.
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks.
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
Next is ordinance 2021-22. Next is ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty-three. City Attorney, I will let you have this now, since you're going to read the same thing I'm going to read.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. So this is ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty-three, I'm going to read it by title only. An ordinance of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending Chapter one-ten zoning, Section one-ten dash one-eighty-two maximum building height, Section one-ten dash two-oh-seven maximum building height, Section one-ten dash two-thirty-two maximum building height, Section one-ten dash two-sixty-two maximum building height, Section one-ten dash two-ninety-two maximum building height, Section one-ten three-twenty-two maximum building height, Section one-ten dash three-fifty-two maximum building height, of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Madeira, Madeira Beach, to provide consistency with and support of the adopted provisions of Chapter ninety-four, floodplain management, of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Madeira Beach, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. That was the second and final reading of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty-three by title only.
Okay, is there any discussion on this amongst the commission?
I just have a question on, in Section one-ten dash two-nine-two. Do you guys know why we have, we crossed out the sec, second story, um, for loft, storage only is permitted? That's in the John's Pass Marine commercial. I don't have any strong feelings one way or the other, but was there a reason?
So this was in the boardwalk, along the boardwalk area. Um, I think Linda discussed it briefly last time, said, um, says the second story for storage is only permitted, but currently what's down there, it, it doesn't reflect what's down there.
Okay.
So it would essentially turn everything into nonconforming structures.
Okay. I got it. Thanks.
Anyone else?
No.
Is there any public comment? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance number, uh, twenty twenty-one dash twenty-three.
Is there a second?
A second.
City clerk, will you call the roll?
Vice Mayor Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
Next is ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty-four, uh, prescribing the manner of holding the March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two municipal election, providing for the polling places, and providing for a referendum for the sale of real property owned by the city.
Yes, Mayor, this is ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty-four, an ordinance to the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, calling for a municipal election on March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, for the purpose of electing a Commissioner for District One and a Commissioner for District Two, providing for a referendum for the sale of real property owned by the city, providing for publication, authorizing election expenditures, identifying the Pinellas County canvassing board as the canvassing board for the March fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, actually, it should be twenty twenty-two election, uh, municipal election, providing for repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, to the extent of such conflict, and providing for an effective date. That was the second final reading of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty-four by title only, noting the change in the title from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two. It's just a little typo.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Is there any discussion amongst the commission? Nope. Is there any public comment on this? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash twenty-four.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
City clerk, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Price?
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero, and also, I wanted to mention that, uh, of course, there's three charter amendment ordinances that the commission will be considering for approval, uh, that's following, and if any of those should be approved, or all, uh, it will require that ordinance number twenty twenty-one twenty-four to, in the title, to include, to mention those charter amendments, which will require me to advertise for a third reading and public hearing for December the eighth as well.
Okay, so this is ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty-five, um, an ordinance of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, submitting to the electors of the City of Madeira Beach a proposed amendment to the City Charter, Section three point three, nomination of Board of Commissioners, subparagraph A, filing, to provide that a candidate be elector and a resident one year immediately prior to the date of their application, and by providing for an effective date. That was the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty-five by title only. You'll notice in the body of Section Number One, it's sort of reflecting the change from two years to one year. Also, I'll notice in the ordinance that there is the, uh, ballot language, uh, that would be put on the ballot if it's approved.
Okay. Okay, we've previously discussed this, but, uh, do we have any more discussion on this? Is there any public comment on this? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance number two thousand twenty-one dash twenty-five.
I'll second.
City clerk, will you call the roll?
Vice Mayor Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
Next is ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty-six.
Mayor, this is ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty-six, an ordinance of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, submitting to the electors of the City of Madeira Beach a proposed amendment to the City Charter, Section three point three, nomination of Board of Commissioners, subparagraph C, candidate petition forms, to provide that a candidate for office of Mayor and District Commissioner shall submit twenty-five candidate petition forms signed by qualified voters, deleting the qualifying petition fee requirement, and by providing for an effective date. That was the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty-six by title only. You'll note in Section One of the ordinance, it changes the fifty to twenty-five, and also the strikeout version where it's saying that, I'm sorry, uh, yeah, that's right. In lieu of a hundred signed candidate petition forms containing the electors' signatures, a candidate may qualify by paying fifty dollars, um, and submitting fifty, uh, candidate petition forms, that has been stricken. And also notice in the next section of the ordinance, the ballot language that would go on the ballot for consideration by the voters.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any discussion amongst the commission?
Yes, I would like to just, for anyone watching this, um, the reason for this ordinance and the one previous to this was, um, to get more people involved in local politics and get some younger people up here, hopefully, and we thought it, making it easier to run for office, uh, would do that, and so that was the purpose, and we discussed it at length at the last meeting, but for anyone who didn't know.
Yeah, and, uh, which goes back to, uh, twenty twenty-one dash twenty-five also, that was the reason for reducing that to one year from two years. So, uh, any other discussion? Is there any public comment on this? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty-six.
Is there a second?
Second.
City clerk, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
Next is ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty-seven. Mr. Trask?
Thank you, Mayor. This is ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty-seven, an ordinance of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, submitting to the electors of the City of Madeira Beach, a proposed amendment to City Charter, Section three point four, manner of holding elections of the Board of Commissioners, subparagraph A, to provide that all elections shall be held in the city on the first Tuesday after the second Monday in March, with the exception of the presidential preference primary election every four years, of each year for the purpose of electing successors to elective office and providing for an effective date. You can see in Section One of the ordinance, it specifically addresses when the election would be, to correct the fact that the election will take place on that particular day, the first Tuesday after the second Monday, except when there's a presidential preference primary, and, and when that happens, it'll be on that date. Also, deleted some, um, language at the bottom of the paragraph, um, that dealt with the, um, the initial, uh, change in the charter sometime back in the year nineteen ninety-nine or two thousand as to when the start date would be. That's not necessary in anymore, so that sentence has been deleted. And also in Section Two, it references the ballot question, which will be on the ballot for the voters to consider making this change.
And as I remember, this is simply to get us in sync with what the county is doing?
That is correct, because our city charter requires that the Pinellas County Supervisor of Elections conduct the elections, so of course, we have to do it when they do it.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion? Is there any public comment on this? Is there a motion on the floor?
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash twenty-seven.
I'll second it.
City clerk, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
Next is increase in parking fee from two fifty to three dollars an hour. Mr. Loughlin?
I'll go ahead and read that.
Okay.
So this is, um, let me get this one right. So this is ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty-eight, an ordinance of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending the fees in election procedures manual that was amended by ordinance twenty twenty-one dash nineteen, providing for conflict, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. That was the first reading of that ordinance, twenty twenty-one dash twenty-eight. Uh, I believe the only change that, in the procedures manual, is that changed from two dollars and fifty cents to three dollars an hour. Is that correct?
And one other change on the, uh, credit card convenience fee, moving that from a fixed amount to an amount suitable to recover the card processing fees charged to the city. So that's in finance, currently that amount is a set figure at three dollars, but depending on the, the volume and, and size of the transaction, the city could, may not be recouping all of those processing charges. So I, this is, um, my contention was to change that to, uh, state a, an amount suitable to recover the city's costs, so we could be cost neutral on that.
Okay, and it, we might want to look at, uh, other processors to see what we can do on, on a rate for processing those. Any other discussion? Is there any public comment on this? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we, um, increase the parking fee from two dollars and fifty cents to three dollars per hour.
So this is, need to be a motion to adopt the ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty-eight.
Oh, okay, sorry, I didn't see that. It's not on the agenda. All right.
Yes.
I will rephrase. I'd like to make a motion to pass ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash twenty-eight.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
City clerk, will you call the roll?
Vice Mayor Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
And just to follow up on that, to tee this up for the second reading, I'll also put forth a resolution to you all for that increase in parking to go to be restricted or, or committed, in this case, by you all for the construction of a, a parking garage. And that's what you want, so we'll, we'll have a resolution accompany in the, in the same agenda packet, so you'll approve the second reading ordinance as well as the resolution, so that increase will be restricted for that very purpose.
Perfect. Yeah, and go ahead and move that fifty thousand dollars into that account to be used for the engineering.
Also have a budget amendment, so we'll do a budget, a resolution for a, a budget amendment for FY twenty-two. We'll put that forth in the December meeting. That'll designate that fifty thousand and change-
Roughly, yeah.
-to go right to that parking garage.
Okay. Okay. Next is purchase of community development software.
Mayor, I had resolution, uh, twenty twenty-one dash thirteen under unfinished business, subparagraph nine A. It was the new agenda.
Ooh, I didn't get that.
It was a revised agenda that was provided to me, and it's, should be in your packet, resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirteen revising the final budget for twenty twenty-one.
The city manager was sending that item out separately. Um, when he published the agenda, he, the, that item didn't get put in, so he had me to update the agenda online, and they were sending out the resolution for that individually to each commissioner, so that would have been online. I should have printed it for, and I have it here that I'll pass around.
Well, too late now, I mean, we have to look at it, digest it.
Instead of having it electronically, yeah.
When it gets sent to me electronically, I mean, I run here and pick up my packet and make notes.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know what this is about, to be honest with you.
Right, now, would you like for, to just come back to this and a couple of items or an item, and I can run and go print those?
Yeah.
Yeah, we need, we need a chance to digest that.
Print enough for everybody.
And I want to be sure we're okay on that being published properly for this meeting.
Yeah, it's been online since, he had it republished and put in there the same day it was published, it, it was redone that day.
And why do we have old ones in our, oh, because we picked them up that day.
Yeah, Megan had already printed them.
Okay, yep.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So we also need to make sure, I think that this absolutely has to be done by November thirtieth, correct?
Correct.
It has to be done within sixty days of the, um, the closing of the, the prior fiscal year.
Correct.
So you can't put this off until December.
Right. No, we're going to do it tonight. We just need to look at it, obviously.
Right, the, it was published, I think, Friday.
Okay.
They, yeah, it's been up since last Friday, and, um, and I should have, my error, I should have had you a paper copy and not only had him to send it electronically, but I'll go get it.
Send us an email saying, "Look at the new agenda." I mean, I didn't get that. Did anybody?
No.
Okay.
Okay, so we just, we're going to come back to that, Mayor?
Come back to it.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Okay.
And if you can, uh-
I will go do that.
If need be, we will take five so that you can get that printed out for us. Okay. Okay.
Carry.
Or we can, yeah, we can carry on. Okay, now, purchase of community development software. Mr. DeSantis, if you want to get in the hot seat.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm looking at my notes. For the past six months, back since the BOC workshop meeting in, uh, April, we've been, uh, diligently looking for new software for the building department, and we went through several different, uh, software, um, systems, and we broke it down into the three top ones, and I worked with, uh, Director Portell and all of our folks downstairs to help, uh, get this down to those top three, and from your packet, you can see the top three. Municity was the one that the, uh, city staff prefers over the, uh, other two, and the reason being is, Municity is a full package, and it's designed for the building department itself. It, um, it encompasses a lot of, uh, a lot of extra modules in there to help the other folks downstairs, but, uh, it's a full package, and it's, um, it's a real time, and it's, it's going to be a lot easier for the folks outside to see in where their permits are, what's going on in planning, and where in building, and the holdup, things like that. It's, uh, it's going to be a lot better communication with everybody.
Okay, so of the three, this is the top one?
Yes, sir. Of the three, uh, we prefer to go with Municity, of the three.
How much is that program?
The program, I have a list here, is a hundred and one thousand seventy dollars, but if you look at the Municity program itself, the cost, let me get my notes here. The, uh, the total cost for the system is ninety thousand four hundred and fifty dollars, but they have an optional contingency of ten thousand six hundred and twenty if needed. So the base cost of it's going to be ninety thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. It was just a contingency.
What is the contingency for?
Um, for additional training, or, um- For additional training or transfer of data from our existing munis over there. If there's additional fees that pop up, it'll be used. If not, we'll keep it down to $90,000.
Okay, just don't buy, don't hire any slow learners down there, okay?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Okay, is that in this year's budget?
Yes, sir. I put it in this year's capital. I didn't put that quite that much in the capital, but I did put it in the capital items.
We need to make, we need to make it a budget amendment. So I mentioned in December, I'll come to you with an FY '22 budget amendment for the $50,000 for the parking garage. This will be another item. We initially had in the '22 budget, then accelerated to an amendment in the '21 budget. And then that never took place. So we need to move this back to the '22 budget.
Okay, so how much short are we going to be?
We'll, we'll budget for the full amount.
Okay, we're okay to do that?
Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I just got a quick one, Frank. So this is all, this is all coming out of the building fund anyway, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And the only other question I got is, you know, from what the research that you guys have done, this will pretty much squash all the.
Yes, sir.
minutia. How about that?
That's a good way to put it.
Thank you.
But yes, sir. That should take care of everything.
We're going to push forward and we're going, we're transparent.
Everything's real time. When we do our inspections, it's, everything's real time. People see where we're at with our inspections during the day. What passed was didn't. Architects, engineers, everybody can email in and out. They can see the whole, from the time the permit electronically comes in the front door, online, they can see the whole process, where it's sitting, how long it's sitting, why it's sitting, any comments, everything automatically go back with, via emails. So everybody's in the loop.
So this is going to really eliminate some problems between developers, their architects, their engineers?
Yes, sir.
A lot of the stuff we've had going on.
And this, just another note too on this, this system here. This is nationwide. It's, it's backed by the ICC, the International Code Council, and it's used nationwide. It's a very, very high software system.
So if you get someone from another municipality or whatever, odds are they're probably trained on this?
Yes.
Okay, good, sounds good.
But the most important thing is the, if it's for a, like a residence, the homeowner can go on and see what the holdup is.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and find out what, you know, so I think that's why we're all excited because.
Yeah, we're excited too.
That'll be nice. The homeowners can have a little, know what's going on without listening to.
And everybody downstairs, the entire team, everybody was involved in this process. So everybody had their input and we all came to this conclusion.
Yeah, there's been a lot of finger pointing at the city on problems when the reality is it's not the city.
Yes, sir.
It's holdups, holdups from, from, whether it's the architect or engineer, whoever. So that'll be a good thing. What, what kind of timeline do they look at once this is?
We were looking generally at two to three months. It could be shorter than that. Depends on how they, how much they transfer over from our existing systems and the training. But we're looking at two to three months.
Okay, so January?
Yes, sir.
And do we, do we own this, this software?
Yes, yes, we own this software. It's cloud based, meaning that I can be on a cruise ship down in the Bahamas, doing my work on a cruise ship without being, my wife's going to hate that. Without being downstairs at my desk. It's, it's cloud based. You can go anywhere and use it. Same with the outside folks, whether it's homeowners, architects, engineers, anybody that wants to do permits, input, everything's cloud based. There's nothing here.
Now, will we have unlimited cloud storage with them? Or is that something they're going to come back to us on?
Well, the storage is going to be here. The data storage will be here, but the software itself is cloud per.
Okay, I didn't know if our information would be going into.
I thought it was a hosted product, so I thought it's hosted in the cloud. So we're, we're not storing on our servers locally.
Right.
It's, it's hosted in the cloud and that's a part of the subscription, annual subscription fee that they will charge.
Thank you.
It's part of that is hosting the product. It's a cloud based solution.
You're right.
Okay, that's what I was curious about was is, and is there a maximum amount of storage we have before we need to start paying them more money or is it unlimited?
Well.
It should be unlimited.
Okay.
Yeah, it should be. I, I'm sorry, I can't answer that right now. But it should be hosting systems.
And that's what the $7,500 and the $7,700 is to, to kind of pay for the storage in the future? And then continue.
You're looking at the cover sheet?
Yeah.
If you look down year one, the total annual SAAS is $7,350. That's the annual fee. And just below that is the Municity software implementation, which is $39,000. That's the actual software itself.
Right.
And if you drop down below that, there's $8,100 in training, remote training, and it shows three and a half days and two days on site. And below that is $6,000 for the data migration between Tyler and Munis, up to 40 hours to transfer all that over. And then if you drop down below that, the Municity Connect, that's the connection for the outside folks. That's a one-time fee of $30,000, just a one-time fee. That's the cloud base for the outside, for everybody outside to look in. That's the module. That's the important one. So the bottom number is $90,450. And again, that contingency was $10,000, something, $10,620 was the contingency. We, we opted to check that, but hopefully we don't have to use that. We'll keep it on $90,000.
I see, yeah.
But there's a second year and a third year down at the bottom too. So that's just the normal fee to keep the, keep everything running.
Yes, sir. That's the annual fee.
So we just need to plan for that. Right, it's a SaaS product, so it's a subscription based model. We own the data. We don't own the underlying product. So it's not something that's downloaded per se, hence it's web based application. So yes, we'll be paying that subscription fee annually. So we'll just bake that in the budget.
Okay, all right. Any other discussion?
No, I guess just when this all gets implemented, we need to request a nice, simple, one-page sheet to give to the homeowner to show them how to get on and look at their project and how to interpret.
We'll have it on the website with links, everything. It'll be super simple.
Okay, thank you.
Well, if it's as easy as my Madeira Beach app, it'll be a piece of cake.
We're hoping for it.
That's, that's a great app. Okay, anyone else got anything? Any public comment? Do I have a motion?
Motion to let Frank buy this.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I make a motion that we purchase the community development software of Municity as requested by our building department.
I'm afraid you've lost your window unless.
I'm just concerned about some of the costs on the software side. At around, just $30,000. Is that unlimited use?
So we need to get you at the microphone, sir, when you get your name. Because anybody that's watching this won't be able to hear what you're saying.
Hi, sorry, I just.
Name and address and.
Andy Wells, 550 Norman D. Road. I do software for a business, so I was just concerned about looking at where the contract getchas are. And obviously, we have 10,000-ish residents here or 6,000. If everybody's going to log in, to your point, Helen?
Yeah.
Is that included into the $30,000 fee? Or is there an annual component to the login on the SaaS model? We know that there's a $7,000 charge. I think, John, you asked the right question. There will also most likely be a data set charge potentially. And this could be a gotcha. They don't declare it. It comes out on the AWS side in the cloud and they add that to the bill in the second year. So just some extra things that, obviously I haven't read your contract, but we should be aware of as a community to make sure there's no gotchas in there that can easily, easily take you from $7,000 to $20,000 a year.
Well, that $7,000 covers three different subscriptions. So I guess Frank, you know, when you talk to these folks, make sure.
If you look at page two, the third dot on page two, the Municity.
Oh, system access.
Subscription pricing includes unlimited user access.
So there's two types of user. There'll be a user from the city, yes, who will be in doing daily work. And there'll be a user from the community who will raise a request, yes. Are they covering both of those in that statement? They are, okay.
Says there is no additional charge for adding users.
Right.
There are cities much larger than Madeira Beach using it.
Yes, okay.
Where a small fly.
So if we know one, John, we should ask them. Because have they got caught by gotchas? Most cities don't worry about it. I'm sure St. Petersburg wouldn't say we'd just pay it. But if we know one, it might be worth asking. Sorry.
Yep.
No, good, good point.
Okay. Frank, I'm sure those are clarifications you will get before the purchase is made.
Yes, sir.
So is there a motion on the floor?
Yes, I made it.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
City clerk, will you call the roll?
Vice Mayor Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
Big thank you to all of you.
Thank you, Frank. I don't think we have any contracts or agreements for tonight. There's nothing on here, so that's. Next is new business. First is selection of top city manager candidates for the second round in-person or Zoom interviews.
Can we take the five minutes and look at this resolution first?
Yes.
And then, because that's going to be a long, longer discussion.
Okay. It's 7:02 PM. We'll take a five-minute recess. This meeting is called back to order at 7:11 PM.
Do you have your mic on? I can't hardly hear you over here.
I did not have it on, I'm sorry. Did you call for discussion, Mayor, I hope?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Want me to read that resolution first?
Yes, please.
Okay. So this is resolution 2021-13, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending the budget for fiscal year beginning 2021, beginning October 1, 2020 through September 30, 2021, by increasing the general fund and sanitation fund revenues and appropriations for expenditure and providing for an effective date. That was a reading of resolution 2021-13 by Title Only.
Okay. Mr. Loughlin, I, I have to agree with Vice Mayor Price. There's a lot of red on here.
Sure, well, let's talk about it. So first, just the general overview. So budget amendments are permissible, as you know, from your, the city charter, specifically Article 10, financial procedures. State law, as City Attorney Trask mentioned, allows for budget amendments to occur up through 60 days after the fiscal year end. Article 10 mentions that intra-fund, intra-fund transfers are allowed. And we even passed a resolution number 2020-20 to clarify, provide clarifying guidance on what that means. And that's interpreted to include any needed increases to the overall budget of a department within a fund or division within a department that separately reported in the city's adopted budget. So what we're doing here is we are increasing the overall appropriations for certain departments and offsetting that with increasing revenues since the city was far exceeded, their actual revenues far exceeded what we budgeted for fiscal year 2021. So that's good news. So let's maybe walk through, and so specifically on the revenue side, I guess, starting with the good news first. You can see overall, citywide, we were 1.3 million, 1.345 million over budget on the revenue side. So revenues, actual revenues exceeding budget. With the biggest increases in charges for services for $678,000, a lot of that in the general fund, a lot of that was geared towards the parking fees that did better than budget. And then taxes, we budgeted a little lower on certain sales, have some sales taxes and other taxes where we thought COVID could have an impact and it didn't have as diminishing an impact as we had anticipated during the budgeting process. So on the expenditure side, those items that are in red that you see, those are actually addressed in the, in the amendment. Except for human resources. So if I'm looking just at the general fund on the human resources side, you see that negative $42,000. But if you recall, we had initially budgeted that position as a contracted position and then ended up hiring that Sean Lilly as a, so as a part-time employee. So our personnel is over budget, but we're also under budget on operating. And overall, for that department, we're, we're under. So the budget, the entries, that's on the first page of Exhibit A. Those really signify the additional appropriations we need for those departments. However, all of that is offset by additional revenues in the general fund. So there's no, we're not pulling any money out of reserves to fund these additions. So that can help, help your comfort level, I hope. But let's go through them regardless. So, and I'm not, I'll speak as best I can for the department specifically. On the community development side, just looking through that detail, there was a lot spent with dual and associates. And then there was also from the University of Florida on the impact fee study. And it's possible that that wasn't contemplated during the budget, the original budgeting process for what those fees would be. So that was over budget on that. And the FEMA flood mitigation program, that was just for expenses occurred associated with that, that we then submit a claim to FEMA. So the idea is we're net neutral on, on that FEMA program is the intention. It's been a long, arduous process to try to get reimbursed for those FEMA costs, but that's, the intention is we're net neutral on that. Law enforcement, I don't really have an explanation. It's just $3,000 off a $1.35 million budget. Some slight over expenditure there on the parks, capital improvement. So an increase in $37,000 there. That was.
Wait, wait, wait. No explanation for the law enforcement. Okay, so that's $2,000. Before that, though, we have Public Works for $36,590. I mean, I'm looking at the document.
I'm sorry, I'm on the actual budget amendment itself.
You're jumping around on us, so it's kind of hard to.
I'm going through the budget amendment. You want to just go through the page two? Okay, we can do that.
Because you started off talking human resources, which was good, and then community development.
Yep. There's no overall change to finance. So finance overall is positive.
I know, but, but we miscalculated on the personnel services, right?
We did, yep.
But we underestimated the operating expenses. Okay, so you're still quote unquote, okay there.
We're okay there, right. At the, at the budgetary level, according to our charter, is it, is it the overall department level?
Right.
I just showed this as additional analysis for you all to see everything at what we call the character level, which is broken up between personnel, operating, and capital. So overall, on the department level, we're good on finance.
But we, but what is that, overtime? But we, but what is that, overtime? The nine thousand, two hundred and forty? But Personnel Services, is that payroll, pay?
That's Personnel, yeah. That's, that's payroll.
So, because that shows up a lot through here. So I'm just want explanation. How did we, how did we underestimate that? Was it the raises we gave or?
We paid time and a half for two months during COVID, which we were all unaware of. Which was, could be some of this on a number of these departments. Is that correct?
Potentially, but I think that might be more in FY twenty twenty than twenty-one. If I had to guess on finance, and I'd have to do more research, we had one part-time individual, Donna, that her retirement date got extended a bit. So that, that might cause that, might have been the cause for that. So knowing that, we made sure we were under our, on our operating expenses to be under overall for the budget for that department.
Just out of curiosity, Donna was moved over to the Marina?
She was assisting Marina with some of the, with administrative duties. I think finance was still incurring that cost as she was still under our finance department.
So, so did we add an additional person when she went over there?
She was over there temporarily and then she's retired.
Well, I know I went over there and she was over there. And I said, what are you doing over here? And it was kind of like, oh, I don't know. Just kind of hanging around until I retire. That's why I'm asking this question.
I mean, Marina can address that better, but I mean, she was utilized for certain administrative assistance on financial transactions.
So did we put another person on when Donna went to the Marina? That's my question.
Another person on within finance?
Yes.
No.
Okay.
So, right. So finance, we're now just at three F T Es in the entire finance department. So we've cut that down.
And on community development, dual and associates, this was a lot of this cost. We talked a number of months ago about putting this out on RFP for another engineering firm. Do you, do we know where we stand on that?
On that. Bob, do you, can you, you want to address that?
Yes. I think the last conversation we had, we were doing a, we're going to do a post to see about hiring a city engineer in-house. And I think Sean had that ready to go. I don't know if it's been posted this week or not, but we had to get it approved through Frank and through Linda, the job description, to make sure that it was sufficient. And we wanted to see what type of response we got.
Because we're just getting torn up on these engineering costs. So the one hundred and thirty-one thousand, is that, that is mainly dual and associates?
A combination of dual and associates and University of Florida for the impact fee study.
Okay, all right. And the sixty-four thousand?
That's the FEMA flood mitigation program costs.
Okay. I'm surprised we didn't.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Just to fill you in a little bit on the mitigation cost, that's that program that was ended, I think, about four years ago. But, you know, Linda and I were working hard at trying to get that resolved. But those are pass-through dollars. So the money that was spent in twenty-one, the state is supposed to reimburse us. And I know Linda was working hard at getting those approvals done. The same thing with the, with Jerry Murphy. I know we, we did have some expenditures on the impact fees, but there are also some items that he did in reference to the comp plan. And his fees got reimbursed through a grant through Department of, a D O E. And so that should pretty much be a wash on that end. We'll just have the expenditures on the impact funds.
Okay. Have, have those funds been received? Andrew?
I can check on that and get back with you.
Okay.
I think the, the Department of Emergency Management has not issued the checks on the last two disbursements in reference to those FEMA grant homes, the ones I was referring to from about four years ago. But the final paperwork and approvals are supposedly done. I've seen email chain going through, so I, I think we're finally going to be able to put this thing to rest and get our money reimbursed to us.
Okay. Yeah, because there's a, just a whole bunch of red on here.
Next down is Public Works. Person, there again, Personnel Services.
Yeah, I don't have a good, I didn't provide an in-depth analysis on that one because they were under budget overall. So maybe they had budgeted for professional services that they ended up hiring an individual in lieu of.
Director Webber, do you know what that thirty-six thousand, five hundred is? Where we're in the red here?
It's the, we budgeted one seventy-three and ended up with two ten. We can, if you don't know offhand, we can. Not sure offhand, but we can, we can dig into it and get back with you.
Okay, thank you.
Well, let's make sure that gets on the agenda for our workshop, this whole thing.
Yeah. Parks and Rec, capital outlay, thirty-six thousand, seven hundred.
So that was the, the portable restrooms for the Kitty Stewart Park.
And having to redo it and redo it and redo it again.
Yeah. So that didn't, that was not in our capital budget.
The handicap ramp and whatnot, Megan, was that part of what that was?
I don't believe that that covered that cost. I believe that was the portion of the restroom trailer that we paid. Because I don't believe that that, the ramp part of that was taken out of that account. Sorry. There was a really tall person here before me. Yeah, so that's the restroom trailer that we have. That was our portion of the payment.
Okay, but I wouldn't surprise, that wouldn't have been in the budget.
It was in the budget. We voted on it. We voted on new bathrooms and rebuilding the ramp.
Yeah. Well, that was at Archibald. That was Archibald. We're talking about Kitty Stewart Park.
Correct. Yeah, this is Kitty Stewart.
Oh, that other one.
Yeah, I don't believe that that was put into the budget. I believe that was an after the fact. But I believe it was brought to the.
We had a port, in twenty-one budget, we had a portable restroom renovation, ADA restroom renovation. I thought that was Archibald.
That's Archibald.
Right. That, that wasn't a budget. This was not.
Portable restroom.
We knew we were going to have to contribute to that.
Maybe not portable, but just restroom, restroom renovation.
Restroom renovation.
Sorry.
Okay. Okay. Next.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Just to clarify, that was part of the development agreement for Ocean Grill, which ended up being Caddy's. The developer put up twenty thousand and the remainder of that balance is what we needed to spend to buy the bathrooms and get them installed.
Okay, but it just wasn't, but it wasn't budgeted for?
We, you know, originally, I think the cost estimates were supposed to be like twenty or twenty-two thousand is what I was told. And it ended up being much higher.
Okay.
But we were responsible to make up the difference.
Okay. Recreation, Personnel Services, fifty-two.
That's a whole person. That's a whole employee right there.
Fifty-two thousand.
I, I can't speak for Jay, but I think a lot of that is overtime, but we can provide a more in-depth analysis on that one.
Now, I will say, I know we had between the storm, between Etta and Red Tide, well, Red Tide was, you know, it was twenty twenty-one.
It's summer long this year.
And, and beach cleanup in general. I'm sure we had a lot of overtime on that stuff, but. And people wonder why we want to raise parking rates. I'm just waiting. We've had, we've had everything else since we've been in office, Vice Mayor Price. I'm waiting for the earthquake and the volcano.
And the fires.
Parking enforcement.
So these are bank service charges, which are basically your, your processing fees that came in under, over budget. And so that's a part of the amendment on page one.
Yep.
To move that up. But do recall that we also assess a surcharge, so we also have the revenue to support that as well.
But, you know, if we're budgeting, though, for these charges and these folks are coming in way over what was budgeted, are they giving a reason? Are we questioning them on why they're charging us so much more than we've budgeted for? I mean, I would think we're, we should know what we're being charged. And if we, there's a big discrepancy, aren't we questioning these vendors before we just pay the bill?
My understanding is it's, it's a set per transaction fee of perhaps a percentage plus excense. So I think we know what that is per transaction. It's just then a matter of estimating what the volume is.
So we had a lot more volume.
We did.
I know, I know the, I know the parking revenues was up substantially.
We did have a good year for parking, yep.
Um, John's Pass Village, capital outlay, twenty-three thousand.
So we had a, a John's Pass channel study. It looks like that wasn't budgeted. And that's what I put in the amendment for ten thousand dollars. So the John's Pass channel study.
That's part of it. Well, there's, still leaves thirteen thousand, but.
Did you see what it, that doesn't have a description?
I believe that was the John's Pass boardwalk inspection that was done by the engineering company, because it was right around that price.
Okay. I was just thinking that was, we were budgeted for that, so that wouldn't have been showing there.
I don't believe.
It's possible that was budgeted in operating, but, but was recorded at capital.
Okay. By the way, while we are on this, a quick note for you guys. I got a call from Representative Cheney last week. The sand issue at John's Pass, Representative Cheney took it to the D E P in Tallahassee. They approved it. So it's going to Appropriations Committee for, and it looks like the state may finance the dredging of John's Pass.
Megan turned in the paperwork to R J. Today, we've gone, been going back and forth trying to get the numbers in line with Manalas County.
Yeah, I think it's, what, twenty-three thousand cubic yards they're looking at moving.
Right around that, yes.
And that's, and I got no problem with that sand being put back along the beach.
I was going to say, where are they putting it? Yeah.
Yeah, if it's just put right offshore, it's just going to wash back in.
There's a couple ideas. We have to remember.
Let us know next time.
Megan starts growling when I say that, but that was even brought up by the county, actually.
Absolutely, it was. But there's also ideas of putting it at Sunset. So their, their county actually had just gotten a proposal to do the sand granular test to see if it matches. Because before you put it up on the beach, it has to go through this process. So we should have those answers by February.
Well, if, yeah, if they want to put it on Sunset, we'll sell it to them.
I'll leave that up to you, Mr. Mayor.
Because two weeks after they put it on Sunset, it's gone.
We'll get it eventually.
It'll work its way back.
Congratulations, Mr. Mayor. That is just absolutely fantastic.
That is, that is something.
I know how hard you worked on that. That's, that's awesome stuff.
So Archibald Fund, Personnel Services. Again, this may be related to Red Tide and whatnot. I don't know.
Slightly over budget on, on Personnel. We can dig into that further. Could be overtime, probably.
Yep.
So we, we, we contract out the vending there, correct, or the, the people that work at the park, right? The only salaries we're paying there are what? The people that clean the bathrooms and?
I don't even think, I think Deb is the only one that's on, she's.
No, I believe we, I have one full-time person and then there's full-time people that are also work on the fields here for the rec center.
Okay, but Archibald Park, who works there? Who, who is an employee of this city?
Well, because the salary comes out of Archibald Park, that doesn't mean they specifically only work at Archibald. That's, covers all the green spaces in the city besides John's Pass.
We, we've divided it up, basically. Take all those folks that are out there making our city beautiful and we assign it to certain areas and.
Most are taken out of Stormwater. I have one in Public Works Administration. And then sanitation is strictly just sanitation.
So that fifty-nine hundred dollars was in reality all over town?
I can't answer that specifically, but it's possible.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sanitation Fund, sixty-seven thousand, four hundred dollars operating expenses. I know we had to buy a new tractor, I think, ahead of time.
That'd be capital.
That'd be capital outlay, okay.
This is just the rising costs of, I think I had the two accounts that were the culprits, which were curbside recycling and, and waste disposal. So those are our.
We fixed.
Tipping fees.
Yep.
Okay.
We fixed the curbside.
We fixed, yeah, we fixed both. And I actually just got confirmation from the county today that all the commercial rates and everything has been switched over. So this billing cycle started October fifth, and they will get their new bills on December sixth, seventh. So be prepared, because we have a lot of really upset.
I'm going to be calling and complaining about my garbage bill.
We're going to hear a lot of it, so just want you all to be prepared.
Be sure and point out, that's because we recycle. But next year, if they don't want recycling, let us know. I think the contract is up next year. Is it?
It's usually December thirty-first, just whenever we.
Yeah.
I think it is, I think it is next year.
Okay.
We can ask everybody.
Marina Fund, seven thousand dollars in operating expenses.
I don't have an answer for that one. Could just be slightly over budget for a number of different accounts.
Okay.
They were good everywhere else.
Yep.
I mean, everybody was good everywhere else. There's not, I mean, there's a few that.
Yeah, I mean, honestly.
That don't make up the balance, but.
I was able to say, because I usually have my training where the instructors come here. Due to COVID, of course, we, we were allowed to have them webinars, Florida League of Cities and all. And, but I still have to budget for that just in case, because I'm responsible for public records training and different things. So, but anyway, hopefully I might have another savings. And also, I wanted to point out that I usually, usually utilize two part-time workers. And they either don't come. I've got one that doesn't show up and which just makes the clerk's office just overloaded. So, but I think that I have enough that I had budgeted and with the contract services, the extra twelve thousand that I had budgeted for this year, I think I'm going to be able, without adding anything to it, be able to just hire a, a person to help instead of relying on all this part-time workers and they don't show up.
Well, you're not even on this list, so you didn't, you didn't even have to say that.
That's in twenty twenty-two, the one that's coming forward. I won't be on there, I just wanted to say, because I'm just moving everything around where I'll just have a dependable person that'll come every day.
Okay.
All right.
Well, guys, I, I've just got something really quick to add. You know, guys, know how much I love budget amendments, right? However, this isn't uncommon and that's why I don't mean to single them out or give them an excuse. But the, the reason they're not as up to speed on what all these are, this is usually pretty much just a pass-through, kind of walk through it real quick and, and it kind of goes away. Because what they're doing is they're just moving money from one fund basically to another or within the general fund. There's no real, if I'm reading this correctly, there's no real huge fiscal.
No, we're still way ahead.
Deficit, right? So, yeah, I mean, whatever this 12, 1.2 million dollars, I mean, that obviously throws it into a little bit of a tizzy. But our fiscal, there, there's no real impact negatively to us, correct? It's just kind of a moving of money, right? So that's why you weren't really ready for this. I mean, had we gotten this before and been able to look through it, it would have been easier because you just moved things from one side to the other, right?
Correct.
Okay.
The revenues are absorbing it. So again, there's no funding impact to the city. We are far better, far exceeded revenues than we had in deficits and, and expenses. You know, not to mention, overall, we were 513,000 under budget in expenditures for the entire general fund. There were just some departments for the reasons we discussed that were over budgeted. So I've been, this is pretty good. This is like an A minus grade compared to other communities where I have to present these budget amendments that had a, a worse results of operations. So overall, this, this isn't alarming to me.
Okay, well.
Well, it is to me.
Being the new kid on the block.
If this was my household budget, I'd be freaking.
Andrew, so the only real question I have is, what is that 1.2 million, the stormwater fund? What, what is that from? In, I'm sorry, in the revenue, revenue column? It's on the last page, on the back, back page?
Some, some grant of some sort.
Okay.
Do you know where we had a 1.2 million? I'd have to look that and see if we budgeted for a grant that just didn't happen.
Okay, well, I mean, we have to approve it tonight, but I mean, can we just throw some of these on the workshop and just have a quick explanation for?
Sure.
Anything in the red? And I think that'll probably suffice for everybody.
Yeah, yeah, there's no sense in continuing to beat it up tonight.
Yep.
All right. So do we want to go ahead and note on this tonight?
Ask for public comment, I guess.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to pass resolution 2021-13.
I'll second.
City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero.
And for those of you who are watching out there wondering about why I didn't ask for public comment, there's no one here. Answer that question ahead of time.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Next is new business. Selection of top city manager candidates for second round in-person or Zoom interviews. I have to say, I think in this group of applicants we got, we actually got superior candidates from what we got the last time around. If y'all would like to discuss any or, one thing, do we want to, do we want to narrow this down? Or do we want to make a decision tonight?
I see. Well, let, I guess we're gonna have to see if, I mean, if we all pretty much agree, then the decision's kind of made. But I would like to see some people in person who, who, I mean, everybody was really good. I had a long time, I had to start eliminating instead of like picking. So, I mean, everybody had such different and interesting talents and experience. And I was like, oh my God, you know?
I, I was blown away. I, I gotta be honest with you. I mean, I, you know, and kudos to all of you guys because we picked these guys out of a group and, and it was pretty much almost unanimous when we went through our first round. And I'll tell you what, I mean, I'd have, we're almost at a point where this group, and, and I'll agree with the mayor. I, I think that this group, top to bottom, and this is not any disrespect to the last group that came in, but this group, top to bottom, was awesome, awesome. And I think really what we're gonna be kind of, I wouldn't say forced to do, but I think we're, we're gonna be kind of put in a position or have the ability to do is, I think all of them are qualified. All of them have the proper experience, the background, the leadership ability. Some, you know, I, I think the, the one major hiccup with a couple of them might be the, the actual Florida seashore experience. And I don't know, you know, it's up to you guys. I, I don't put that much emphasis in that because we have staff that is well-schooled in that. I think we need a leader to be able to come in. But blown away, but I think the, the beauty of it is, I think we're gonna be able to go in and choose somebody that is the right fit for our staff and for our city. Because I think as far as qualifications, like I said, blown away, guys, blown away.
Me too. One thing that, I have one candidate that I interviewed. And I called his, a couple of his.
References.
Yeah, his references and just raving reviews. And, and that was, and the, and the problem I had was that he put his, what he was asking for a salary, that would have to be negotiated down because he was just, what I feel was way out of range. And that was $175,000.
Mr. Sosiman?
Yes.
Yep.
And I, I would, for me, he was probably the top candidate other than what he was asking for a salary requirement.
Me too.
And, and I will say this also. You know, a car allowance in a big city might be one thing, but this city's two miles long. Does that really need to be something that is in there or is that just a part of their salary? I mean, that's just, that's just my thought. I think that's, you know, it might as well be a part of the salary. Yeah, here's your salary and yeah, your, your car expense is in there, so.
Well, we can certainly, we can certainly negotiate with the person. They may have a really nice car and not, and would rather just, I mean, the car allowance, I mean, they do have to get in their car and drive around and show up to Dixie and other things in Pinellas, I would think. I don't know. A lot of running around, I would think.
Not really.
I agree with you, but if they're used to getting it, if you roll it into their salary, the next time we have to do this, will we ever remember that? And we'll just give it to them? For this time, it's fine, whichever way you want to do it.
Because right now we are giving a car allowance, right?
Yes, $500.
A month.
Yes.
On top of the 135?
Right, right. And remember, you know, five years ago, not even five years ago, we were paying 155, I believe, plus a $500 car allowance. So, you know, it is what it is. I, I mean, I, I don't think taking that out of it is, is a deal breaker to me. If we can negotiate it down, we can. But I think, you know, let's, I, I, I would just suggest, I mean, we might be able to narrow this down a little bit. But I'd interview just about everybody on this list again. I mean, you know, and then we can kind of whittle it down to see where we're at. There's, I don't have the same top candidate as you guys do. I have a different one. But again, I mean, I, all six were fine. I mean, as far as I was concerned, they were all just super, super qualified.
Well.
Well, I'll tell you my top three and, I mean, of the top three, everyone else is within our salary, salary range except for Mr. Sosiman. But we could, we could just kind of narrow it and then it, if it turns out that money's a problem, we go to the next guy or we eliminate them from the list or whatever.
We'd like to do a checklist and narrow it to three candidates. And in the next interviews, let's bring up those factors. Bring up the car allowance, bring up the salary and, you know.
I brought it up during my first time.
I did too.
Because that kind of could, but, you know, that was the problem with the first round, right?
Yeah.
You know, when you're applying for a new job, you need to know what kind of money you're gonna make instead of just going into applying, right?
And.
Although I gotta say, I did not bring it up with Mr. Sosiman.
Nor did I.
He was one of the first ones I interviewed and I didn't flip back there, but as I became.
I didn't.
As time went on, I did with everybody else.
I didn't with the others because the others were in line pretty much.
Well, I spoke with Mr. Vance and he's the one that brought it up, saying he was satisfied with the price. You know, he wasn't willing to go any higher than that.
Right.
So.
Yeah, he's got 130 on his.
130, yeah.
130,000 is on his.
He was very satisfied.
Yeah. So, well, would we like to select three and re-interview them?
I think so.
Okay. Let's do the same checklist that we did when we went over the candidates for the planning and zoning and, and civil service then, and pick three. And if y'all like, I'll start since I'm the first one on that list. And I picked Mr. Gomez, Mr. Heflinberger and Mr. Sosiman.
Okay, who was the other one? I'm sorry.
Gomez, Heflinberger and Sosiman, two, three and four. Vice Mayor Price?
I picked, in no particular order, Tony Carson, number one, Robin Gomez, number two, and Len Sosiman, number four.
Commissioner Hodges?
I went ahead and put in for Carson, number one, Gomez, number two, and Vance, number five. Yep, he was right up there.
Commissioner Andrews?
I had Bill Vance as my top choice. I had Anthony Carson, number two. And I had Joe Heflinberger, number three.
Okay.
Uh, have, number three, three for three, yeah.
Commissioner Hudson?
In no order, I've got Mr. Carson, Mr. Gomez and Mr. Sosiman. Now, one thing, when we looked at these, there were people that had articles about them with some things. I think Sean sent us some of that information.
Yep.
Everybody talked their way through it very well. I'm not sure how. That still makes me a little uncomfortable on some of those people. I just want to make sure we don't get somebody who, that we don't inherit a problem.
Yeah. Did you call any of the references?
Well, I only looked at one of them and we weren't allowed to call.
Okay. So going by the count, it will be candidate Carson, candidate Gomez and candidate Sosiman.
Yep.
So.
And maybe we contact Mr. Sosiman and if he doesn't like the 135? I mean, it's expensive to live here.
170 is a lot too.
Yeah, I know.
Well, and maybe.
Maybe if he comes down, he can.
Well, he, he drives down too. And this might be something that could be done since we've already interviewed him in person. I'll leave that, pardon me, up to the commission. But he is in South Carolina, I believe, or North Carolina. And drove down for the interview.
South Carolina, yep.
And maybe, maybe that's something one of us, Commissioner Price, we talked to you about doing the, working with him on a contract. Maybe you could find out what he's actually willing to come down here for first.
Okay.
How does that sound? And then the other two, I'd say get them on in here for a second interview ASAP.
So Mr. Carson's in Texas.
Mm-hmm.
I think for the second interview, we fly him in. It's not much. And, and Mr. Gomez, where's he?
I thought he was in Georgia.
Yeah, he is. But he's way up there outside Atlanta, I think. And we're talking a couple hundred dollars. But it's, we do have to see him in person. If we're gonna require seeing him in person, we're gonna have to foot that bill, which doesn't bother me.
You wanted?
Okay.
Do you also want to invite a spouse?
Yep.
Well, I would think if he wants to bring her, he can bring her.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know that.
The second interview, we're not offering a job, so, I mean, I.
Well, this second interview may be the determination.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. But I mean, I think if, if they have somebody that needs to determine it with them, they can, they can pay for that themselves.
Well, I'll contact all three.
Okay. Yeah, since.
So next thing we need to do is figure out a, some dates.
Yep, sooner, sooner the better. Perhaps you can get with Mr. Lilly and have him contact the commission on dates.
All right.
Mr. Trask, you look a little bit puzzled. Are we doing something wrong?
No, you're not doing anything wrong. I, I just think that besides the plane flight, may want to consider hotel and rental car too. You may want to discuss that tonight. And then the number of days that you're expecting them to be here. So if they fly in on a Thursday or they're gonna be here till Monday, you know, those types of things. So I, I just want you to all be on the same page on that. What, what do you expect?
Yeah.
That type of thing. That's my only thought.
So I'm sure the Cambria is always real good to the city on rooms. I, I would think that's probably the route to go and.
Well, we'll put them in Cambria and what, we expect two nights here?
Two, yeah.
Two days? I mean, we're all gonna wanna spend a little time with this person, maybe have a meal, you know, I don't know.
Two nights is, I would think, plenty.
Okay.
And.
And a car.
A car or Uber.
Yeah, but they may.
Cars are hard to come by right now.
Oh.
Well, the city has that extra car. Would we be able to pick them up?
Or give it to them to use?
I don't know.
I don't know that.
I don't know you want to do that. You're gonna pick up that liability for someone that you really don't know that much about.
Okay.
So I, I would not suggest that.
Well, they're gonna want to explore, I would think. Some did, I mean, we talked, they did. Talked to some of the candidates who walked the whole beach and went to, you know, John's Pass and all sorts of stuff.
Okay, all right. Um, you know, that's three days on a rental car. I think they still rent Hugos. I think they still rent Hugos.
Well, we'll ask them to, you know, we'll include a compact car, has that.
Okay.
But we'll keep them busy. I mean, I don't mind driving someone around and.
Are you going to offer that to Mr. Sosiman also then? Or are we okay on that since he hasn't been here, or since he's already driven down here?
Well, yeah, 'cause he's up in South Carolina. I think anyone who's out of town, anyone who's not here, I, wouldn't you know, we picked three people that all need to be flown in, but it's worth it. I mean, a pair of tickets is a couple hundred bucks. I looked them all up before.
Mr. Gomez is where?
Georgia.
Georgia.
Okay.
He's outside of Atlanta.
At Clarksville, Clarksburg or something like that.
Okay.
Yeah, he had family in Clearwater, so he might stay there or something, so you might have something different then.
Well, I'm fine with Vice Mayor Price making contact with him and arrangements to get him here in a car for a couple of days.
So, just for, I mean, we got one week and then we have Thanksgiving.
So.
So, we wanna try to get him in here next week?
I would say yes.
Okay. And they may have to be staggered. I mean, are we all around next week?
I guess they may have to go to the store to interview with him, but.
Yeah, I'm not out of, yeah, I'm not out of, well, we're having our, we can involve them all to the Thanksgiving.
We got a workshop next week too, Wednesday.
What do we have next week?
That was canceled to December the first.
Oh, okay, all right, good. I can take it off there.
Well, I'm around all next week, fifteen through nineteen.
Okay.
And weekend. Happy to do weekend. Okay.
Good deal. Okay.
I've lost my sheet, okay.
Okay, next is staff report.
They're all gone.
They're all gone. Andrew, you got anything else?
Me.
Okay, Clara, you got anything else for us on staff reports?
I'm working on getting the packets out for the candidates. They'll be ready for pickup on the third of December.
Okay, agenda setting meeting for December first.
Okay, we got two things on there already. Well, let's get a little bit more detail on the resolution we just passed and the budget amendment.
Yeah.
So, to clarify, for every item in red, you just like an explanation to accompany?
Yeah.
Most of which we already talked about.
And if it's, if it's a variety of a whole bunch of things, just say it's a variety of things, including, here's the top three or something. I mean, not, just to give us a handle on it so that we know we include it in this coming up budget, because some of the stuff that said, I thought we budgeted for, or it should have been budgeted for, we just do it or forgot or something.
No problem.
Okay, that will keep us.
I've got two things.
Okay.
We talked about parks months ago. We now have this fund that Jay has for improving the parks. Is it time to have another discussion on and maybe have Jay here and say, what are we planning to do? Cause it's, this is the time of the year, we want people, people can be out working. And the other one is the restroom at Kitty Stewart. It sounds like we bought that. Are we happy with that? And I know we went with a trailer because if we put it on the ground, we had to put it on the second floor and do an elevator and all sorts of things. Is there a better, is there some way that we can get a permit or to put it on the first floor and?
That's FEMA. And it's, it's a trailer so that if a storm comes, we can hook it up and get it out of there. And that's, that's why it was done that way. It was, it's, it was the cost, really.
I just, if a bathroom, if a locked bathroom floods, who cares?
FEMA.
I know.
You know, there's a lot of things you gotta do for FEMA that don't necessarily make good sense, but.
Well, we could certainly ask for some other options, you know, I don't know.
Can they go over and use Doug's house?
Yeah, sure. Across the street.
Use the pool, stop in. It's not pretty, but I mean, it's, it's, it's effective for what it's needed for. I mean, honestly, I don't see a whole lot of people using it to begin with. If they're in caddies, they're gonna use the bathroom in caddies, if they're on the beach at Kitty Stewart.
They're getting in the water.
Right, they're getting in the water or they're, they're not used to one being there anyway, so. But it's always clean. I mean, I haven't, you know, I've been there a couple of times. It's always been spotless and Angel does a good job keeping up on it, but I don't think it's used all that much, to be honest. So, pumping in, you know, it's.
We need to beautify it.
Right, yeah, I know. I, I mean, like I said, it's not the ideal situation, but given the circumstances, you know, I, I tried to put something on the second floor. We're talking a hundred grand just to kind of get going, right? So, you know, unless we're gonna put aside that kind of money, then we'll probably stick with what we got for a little bit. I mean, it'll service itself for a while. If in a couple of years, we think, you know, we got rolling in dough from all these parking garages, we can, we can throw some money at that.
Well, we might be able to put some planters around it or something. I don't know. What do you think, Megan?
Put some decals on it.
Talking about.
Madeira Beach.
We're talking about the trailer?
Yeah.
So, we have to be careful with that because it is movable in the event of a storm.
Right.
So, we can't put anything fixed around it. I don't think Linda would like that very much. But as far as putting stickers on it, decals on it, we can talk about it, sure.
Like, or, or have an artist paint something on it or, you know, something. I said decals, cause I, I know that they make them really.
You mean like a vehicle wrap type thing?
Correct, like a huge.
We could definitely.
Just put our logo on it.
We have it budgeted though.
Camouflage it, make it look like the beach.
It's not budgeted. And it's not very cheap.
It's an invisible trailer.
It's gonna stick out a sore, like a sore thumb unfortunately, but we can look into doing that. If you guys give me some ideas on what you want, we can definitely get some quotes.
Well, that's why I was just wondering if we couldn't put some planters or something, you know, movable planters.
Yeah, it's very difficult in that area with the way that it was all constructed and the sand that blows in there too, so we have to think about it from a maintenance perspective, because we constantly have to take the sweep, the street sweeper in and suck the sand out. So, I mean, in one day, we'll have two feet of sand. It's, it's a little bit ridiculous, but.
Well, they make, you know, they make artificial plants now for outside. I see artificial hedges upstairs at the Cambria.
Oh, yeah, like on the, on the fence, yeah.
Why we're talking about Kitty Stewart Park? I love what you did at Archibald with the showers.
I'm working on that over there.
What's that?
I'm working on that over there as well.
That would be awesome because that.
The CCCL line over there is much closer, so it's like right there at the seawall and the dunes. So, in order to do that, I'll probably have to get a DEP permit, but I've already talked to them about it.
Okay.
So, I would love to do that. That's a poor design.
Yeah, I mean, if you guys haven't seen what was, if you didn't see the showers at Archibald. So, they moved them from when you used to walk on Archibald Beach, there was a swimming pool, I mean, from the showers.
You would always wade through it.
What Megan did is she moved them up into the dunes and no more problem like that anymore. It's great. And you could do the same thing at Archibald, but I, I mean, at Kitty Stewart, which would be, cause we're getting the same issue. She, we've talked about that before, but, cause all the sand that comes through there and it's just tough to get it from where it's supposed to be into the drain that's down there. So, it was constructed properly, I think, you know, just a lot of sand, that's all.
With a few modifications and some permission from our friends with FDUP, I think we can do it.
Thank you, Megan.
You're welcome.
Okay, anything else for the agenda?
Well, one I brought up last time, I guess I, we might as well talk about it. I, I think we need to decide if drinks on the sidewalk are okay in John's Pass or not, right? Because we got bars serving on the, serving on our sidewalks there. And then other places are restricted from doing that. I mean, we need to like decide. And I know I couched it kind of in terms of like wet zone or something, but people are drinking all up and down there anyway. It's not like we breaking out in gang fights all the time. And we keep having events where everyone has to buy permits from the county to, to serve alcohol. So, I don't know if we just give these people a break and say, you can drink on the sidewalks in plastic cups cause it's happening anyway or whatever, but that's, I would like that on the agenda. The pros and cons, all right, there's pros and cons, obviously. You know, we wanted family, I understand that, but people are doing it.
We, we might wanna have somebody from the sheriff's department here, Clara. I, I mean, even, even one of our CPOs or Corey or Jared to come in. Cause I know that this has been discussed a hundred times. I don't wanna get, I mean, we could go into it now. It's not gonna help us, but let's, let's save it for the, but one of those guys out here, because, you know, I don't think they care so much, but I think that there's, it's, it's come up before and there has been some issues regarding it and we'd have to meet some qualifications in order to do it and do it correctly, so, which is, if we can, have one of those guys here.
So, one of our own deputies?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, somebody who's knowledgeable about the, okay.
Okay, then we got update of community planning process and activity center land use, proposal and proposal for engineering and permitting for the beach groins. Anything else?
What are we talking about, the beach groins? Are we, are we talking about what we want them to look like or?
No.
Oh, okay.
Well, just the engineering in general and.
Yeah, we just received a breakdown of the scope of services.
Okay.
With the permitting and everything, so I'd like to bring it forth to you guys all. So, have the Joe Foster here to kind of talk about the plan.
Okay.
Joe Foster is who?
He's working with Duell and Associates on this project to, to be able to engineer. He's very familiar with the beach groins.
Okay. Thank you. Is that it for the workshop then? I guess it is, okay. Reports, correspondence, does the commission have anything? No?
Well, you know, it's, something just popped in my head. So, what's going on with Patriots Park? We need to raise more money? For the, to have the park designed and built and didn't we have a design kind of picked out? A circle of flagpoles and things like that. I mean, I.
There, there was a design set up for the, the honor guards.
Okay.
And I do believe Mr. Daniel has that information or he's got the layout and everything. And we do have money set aside for that. I do know that the man that's over at Cambria said that he would put some money towards it also.
Right.
And then I think American Legion was involved and I'm not sure about the Elks Club, but, or the VFW, I mean. The Elks Club was wanting to be involved too. I do notice that they just done something in Seminole and they were doing like an honor guards out in their field there in Seminole. And then also, who else was it? Can't think of the name, but it's further up the road. I can't remember who it was. But they did something recently too, for the same thing.
An Els Barica thing.
Els, oh, in St. Pete Beach. They did something too. They had a big show in St. Pete Beach too.
So, I know that we had spent money on the engineering side of it and then I think that it just, the project just kind of halted. But Bob does know about it, so we'll have to check with him and see where that's at.
Okay, well, the project halted. We had this discussion up here that we weren't gonna foot the whole bill. And I appreciate Commissioner Hodges, you saying that the Cambria, but that, I mean, I think a lot of that goes back to a long time ago. Because we haven't seen, I know we had money in the budget for it, but we haven't seen a real outcry for it. Haven't heard anybody really talk about it, at least in here or, or around. So, I thought we were putting it on hold until we got some money from the outside, cause I don't think us paying for the whole thing is probably feasible. It was a pretty expensive project, if I, if I remember correctly. Cause it got bought to us by, I wanna say one of the rotaries or, or somebody bought it to us initially. And this goes back five years, easy.
It's been a while that we've been talking about this.
Yeah, five years easy when it all started. Again, it caught, it, it was pretty hot there for a little bit, but I haven't really heard much about it since. So, I mean, I'd like to get, if we're gonna do it, let's get some firm commitments from some other people to throw some money into it for us. And then I think we look at it then, but in the meantime, I think we could dial that park up a little bit. I mean, that's just my personal opinion, but.
We have the placement for it, but I think it is up to the funding. The placement would be near where the pavilion is in the middle of the park.
Well, should we wait until that other condo building gets built? We don't wanna. I mean, we've added a whole nother branch of the service since we started talking about this.
Right, which means that engineering is gonna have to change on it.
Right, there's gonna be six flagpoles instead of five or whatever, okay.
Well, yeah, and if we're going to discuss it anymore, let's just put it on the workshop. And then we can get some folks in that may be able to give us some more input that none of us know about right now. There may, Jay may know of some of the stuff that's going on with it too. I don't know.
I think it's mostly been handled in the city manager's office.
Has it?
Cause it's definitely, I mean, Public Works takes care of all the parks and I'm not really aware of what's going on.
Bob, are you still with us? Oh, okay, we'll put it on the workshop, okay.
You want me to run down what I have for the workshop?
Sure.
Just make sure it matches yours?
Yes.
Well, for A and B are already on there. Update to the community planning process and activity center. Proposal for engineering at the beach groins. I got C, budget amendment explanations. D, and I'm sorry, I just wrote down Parks-J. Dave, what was?
Just an update. They've, they've got this Friends of the Park. We're collecting money. We're going to possibly give out different parks for different places. Just, is there any?
Like pocket parks or just redo our existing part? I don't know. We'll ask them, okay. Ask Jay for the update on the Friends of the Parks or Friends of Recreation. E, restroom at Kitty Stewart. F, drinks on the sidewalk at John's Pass. And G, Patriots Park.
Okay, that's got it. Does the commission have anything else? Mr. Trask, do you have anything else?
I just want to briefly update you on the Oferger case. You remember, that's the one where this, the, the city was the purchaser of the property at the foreclosure sale. The certificative title has still not been entered by the court. The court, I did look at the docket today just to kind of update you on that. And the, the case is on appeal. There has been a substitution of counsel that has been filed. Looks like the prior owner of the property has changed lawyers. Looks like the, the appellate brief is due November thirtieth. So, I don't know anything more than that at this point. I did reach out to Mr. Widener for an update earlier today. By e-mail, I did not get a response back, but it was late in the afternoon when I sent it. So, as soon as I get that, I'll just update you by e-mail so you all have it. But I wanna let you know that it's not falling off the radar. It's, it's still very, very important and I, we need to get it completed. But that's what I know about it at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
City clerk, have you got anything else for us? Okay. All right. With that, having no more business, this meeting is adjourned at 8:18.